Meeting of Insurance Committee meeting for Monday, the seventh. It is five o'clock at this time. I'll call roll call at this time. To my left is the Honorable Louis Alamea. Myself, Oscar Salinas and part of the committee. Board member, the Honorable Michael Farias is present as well for this meeting. And we'll probably have more members of the board come in. As they come in, I will present them to us. So we will now go to Doc. Well, I have established a quorum. Doc number two, certification of public notice?
I certify that the agenda was posted under guidelines of the Texas Open Meetings Act.
Thank you. We'll go to number three, discussion of DHR ESA based health clinic recommendation, or if any.
Yes, sir. On this item, we're going to start the discussion with Dustin Garza.
Good afternoon, board members, superintendent of schools. As it relates to this agenda item, I know joining back here at ECISD starting this January. And many years ago, there was a partnership created between DHR and Edinburgh CISD. As it relates to the ECISD based health clinic that is located on the east side of Edinburgh. And I think the request was for some discussion as it relates to the clinic. The vision of the clinic and what ECISD and DHR can do to improve. Our staff and our student accommodations as it relates to primary care, health and attending that clinic. Just to give kind of a little bit of history, I think back in 2014, an MOU and agreement was created. Between DHR Health and Edinburgh CISD to put up a clinic. That would service our employees of our district and our student population. Whether they had insurance or not, especially for the students. Obviously, over the years, that clinic has grown. Obviously, with the population that has grown in the city of Edinburgh, especially on the east side of Edinburgh. That clinic sees a lot of patients. And I think some of the concerns is employees, you know, when that first clinic was created. We would preach to our employees and show them what was available at that clinic. And as it relates to primary care, vaccines, blood work, an X-ray machine that was after a couple of years was was put in there. To help have a totality of a clinic there. And I think there's been some concerns as to the availability of that clinic for our staff and students. And we just kind of wanted to revisit this and open up a discussion and dialogue. I invited Dr. Gomez, who is the main medical provider doctor at that clinic. Obviously, she Edinburgh, her kids attend Edinburgh schools. And so I think the discussion could be had and questions from the board and or. I also invited Insurance Committee members from the site based schools to be here to listen in. And if the board members have any questions for Dr. Gomez or myself as it relates to the DHR Health Clinic. We'll be glad to open that dialogue and discussion to see how we can improve what that clinic could offer ECISD.
Okay, so. At this time. What is the function of that clinic in terms of dealing with ECISD employees and and our students? Dr. Gomez?
Okay, good evening. So the clinic still, the primary reason for the clinic initially was to service the students. Especially the students who didn't have access to care. So those unfunded students who perhaps needed vaccines, which we still provide. We are a full Texas Vaccines for Children provider and we have all vaccines for children. And then, of course, yes, to to serve the district employees, which we have plenty of employees from ECISD. Who are continuity patients. But additionally, we do mass sports physicals for the entire district. So we, that's a very big coordination. To do physicals for thousands of students at the schools. So that's one big service that we provide to the district. I also do the DOT physicals for all of the bus drivers. But those physicals are not just bus driver physicals. I have actually found a lot of incidental findings on those physicals. Diabetes, high blood pressure, even cancers in a lot of those patients. So. The quality of care at the clinic is is different. And I think that sets us apart as far as, you know, some of the simple things that we do. Even on my sports physicals, if I see something on a student, I'm going to let them know that they need to go see their primary care provider. To get that addressed. And yes, we added X-ray and we see sports injuries, any student athletes who have injuries, head injuries, any type of student athlete injury. We, as long as it's during our period of open business, we will see those student athletes. And the other thing that we do is we house the district LPC. So a lot of the employees of the district who need to see. The LPC may not want to see her at your campus. And the having her at our clinic, which takes, you know, she takes office space. And if we, we could actually see more patients if we didn't house her there. But I think it's important to have her there because of the service that we provide. We have a great relationship with her. So employees feel like it's a safe ground for them. You know, they don't, people can just go and you don't know if you're going to see me or her or who you're going to see. And she's able to see employees. And we actually, if she has an employee in crisis, a mental health crisis, and they need to see a provider. That same day, we will walk them right over and see them for a visit. Get them started on perhaps medication or refer them to an appropriate psychiatrist if needed. And vice versa, we've seen a lot of employees who need her help and we are able to get them in to see her. And you know, the mental health crisis that is going on currently and it's just exponential. So I think that's another huge service that we're providing to the district. And, you know, vice versa, and I spoke with Eliana and she, she actually said that she's, she thinks that the number of visits. To her have have increased at least 50% if not more because of where she is in the clinic and the access to care. So that's, that's another really big service that the clinic provides. We also do, you know, I've done countless presentations for the school nurses, teachers, staff, parents, and even students. Health fairs, we, we do college night physicals, medical director for the COVID-19 vaccines. And what else am I missing? Yeah, the vaccine clinics, yes. So those are the big things that we provide.
Okay, so can I ask you then? What is your staffing there at the clinic at this time?
So currently, we have several, we just hired another physician, two physicians to work four days out of the week. And we have four full-time mid-level providers. So we have anywhere between four to six full-time providers. So at this time, access to care should, we should be able to see employees. Over the last two years, it's been very, very difficult, as all of you know, during the pandemic with its ups and downs. And, you know, the number of COVID cases in the, in the community, that was just an impossible way to, to, or. An unfair way to say, you know, if we weren't being able to, to see patients due to capacity issues. But at this time, we're in a much better state. We are fully staffed with, with our providers, which was a very, very big limitation, you know, in the past. And we're even hoping to expand. So we're, we're looking at a second location to open a second clinic.
So I think one of the things that I've gotten is that just the, so you're saying that now that you're fully staffed, that the time. Is less now when our employees go there to visit your clinic? Because like, one of the, the major, not complaint, well, I mean, concerns I've had is that as our employees go, go to the clinic. So they can go back to classes, that their wait time has been, it's not as, you know, it's taken, you know, it takes them the whole day or they're not. Or they can't get an appointment, doc. Doctor, is there any way we can work through Dustin or through Diana to try to help alleviate that wait time? And try to get them in and then back to their classrooms? I think that's one of, one of the big things that is out right now, just to give you some heads up on that. Is that just the wait time or the appointment time, not not able to get an appointment at this time? Sometimes it's not, they're not available. So, and this is, we're talking right now, just talking employees. We're talking my, the employees of ECISD.
Yes, and so when we first started the clinic, we actually would have bi-weekly meetings with the Director of Nursing. So that we could address these issues and troubleshoot as they came about. And that has ceased in the past several years.
Okay.
So we have not had any sort of normal meeting times. And that's where I think this, this could really improve things. I've asked several times to Diana to, you know, set up something so that we can have something in place. For ECISD employees. Now that we have full-fledged telemedicine, we can offer telemedicine visits to employees in certain cases, depending on what the complaint is. They may not even have to leave their campus and we may be able to see them via virtually. So I am, we've been trying to do that, but, you know, all of us have been very busy. She's been very busy with COVID.
Yeah, no, I understand.
But now I think we can start, I would like to get back on track with even maybe a monthly meeting, starting with that.
Okay.
So that we can pilot this program, which we have been trying to pilot and carve out some time for, for ECISD employees. Perhaps virtually, you know, do telemedicine options and in-person options. But we really do want to get your employees their appointments and get them in. But we also have to have realistic expectations.
Right.
District does have a lot of employees.
Right.
And, and we will do our best to accommodate all of them. But if we can work, I would like to work with Diana, come up with a good schedule so that we can do this for the district as well.
So like, just, so right now, our district employees are not, like, they're not prioritized at this time? It's like they go, just like in the regular rotation? As they come in, you have to, you put them in that rotation?
Right, and everybody is, right now, we, people, patients call and, and you can make an appointment or we take you in as a walk-in. We, we don't really do VIPs at this time.
Okay.
That, that really stopped, especially with the pandemic.
Right.
Couldn't do it.
But can we work to try to, or do you, can we work to go to that kind of functionality to, with our employees?
Well, that's what I'm saying, I would like to sit down with Diana and see how we can work this out.
Okay.
And, and it would just, again, we need to have realistic expectations and it needs to be a realistic number. We, we can't leave 10 slots open every day for ECISD employees and then not give those to our continuity patients.
Okay.
So, so that's why I'm saying, I, this is something that I would like to have a discussion about.
Okay.
And definitely move forward with.
Okay.
And I, I think we, we can come up with a good plan.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. On, as Mr. Salinas was questioning about our staff. Wasn't there an agreement when this facility of DHR was created that our, our staff and students would be? If they, if they went to see the doctor, that they would be seen, I guess, right away? Wasn't there an agreement or something else?
Yes.
Dr. Salinas?
Yes.
Yeah, there was an agreement and. Unless you can tell me different, but I wasn't here when that agreement was done. So our, we, I thought that our staff was going to be like first come? That way they're in and out and back to work.
Anytime there is a ECISD employee who calls during their conference time, we always expedite them. But what I'm saying is we, during this pandemic, we, that had to cease because COVID-19 patients took priority.
Okay.
But before, yes, anytime a teacher or, or ECISD employee called, it was their conference period, they, they wanted to be seen, we would expedite. And that, now that we are staffed again, we would like to pursue that. You know, revisit that and see how we can expedite your employees.
Okay, second of all, you mentioned the telemedicine. During COVID, it didn't exist? You all weren't, you all were doing that?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, and it was offered to our people and, and I mean our staff of the district and all?
Yes, we've seen lots of district employees through telemedicine.
Okay. And third of all. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, DHR is no, no longer going to be doing the pediatrics as of May?
That is incorrect.
It's incorrect?
Incorrect. There is a, a new pediatric hospital coming, Trischool Hospital. But the exception to that rule of pediatrics is specifically the ECISD School-Based Health Center. So that clinic will still be seeing pediatric patients, fully fledged pediatric patients from birth all the way up. So we will not stop seeing PE.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, I do have a question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Farias?
And I think this is for you, Dustin. Do we have a contractual agreement that specifically spells out the services that were going to be provided?
I think in reviewing the MOU this morning. Specific to the T, I'm not so sure, sir, but vaguely what was requested and what was part of the MOU that was signed, yes.
Okay.
So there is items within that MOU that DHR was to offer as part of the MOU. But to the specific of, let's say, how many employees per week, how many time slots available a day, the time slots, all that specific detail, no.
Okay, okay.
Yes, there, it, it, there's items stated within that MOU that were agreed upon by both DHR and ECISD as to the purpose and the vision of that clinic.
Very good. Very good, thank you.
Any other, yes, sir, Mr. Farias?
Dr. Gomez, you mentioned earlier that now that you are fully staffed, you are looking at opening up a secondary clinic. Is that funded through DHR or is that going to be funded through ECISD?
Everything is funded through DHR. The clinic is funded, the Edinburgh CISD clinic is funded by DHR and this second clinic will be funded by DHR.
With the same services provided?
Yes. We will not have X-ray at that second site, but all primary care services will be the same, including telemedicine.
Any thoughts of maybe adding a pediatrician onsite for some of our students that are requiring, that require attention of a specialist?
I am a family medicine physician, so I can see all age groups. And I did specific pediatric training for over five years. So I see newborns all the way up. So having, we had a pediatrician when the clinic first started. We actually, that's how the clinic first started, it was a pediatrician and a nurse practitioner. And that limited the services of the clinic severely because a pediatrician can only see everyone 18 and under. And so that, that really negates all of the district employees. So it's, it's really important to have a family physician on staff who can see all age groups.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Villa?
Good afternoon. And I would just like to make a comment. I, I've been here and I was just a normal patient when we first opened the HR. And it has been a phenomenal endeavor. I, as an employee and as a patient, would, would, I wasn't able to go till five o'clock. And I want to guarantee everyone in this room that every time I went, I was seen at five o'clock and I was out at least by 5:20, 5:30. I was just an employee and I would go at that time. So thank you to DHR, to Dr. Gomez for everything that, that you have done for ECISD. And that we continue doing for ECISD. If there are thoughts of opening a second clinic, wow, we've come a long, long way. And obviously, we have a lot more people and a lot more patients to see. But as we have all said, that with the pandemic, many things came and, and took the place priority. So hopefully, we will go back to normal soon. So that we can begin that implementation of keeping everyone safe and healthy, whether it is in person or through telemedicine. I had several, several visits through telemedicine and, and was seen right away. I was called and I had a conference and it went very well. I explained my symptoms and I was given what I needed to be given within 30 minutes. So it does work. And so I want to commend you, Dr. Gomez, and to thank you for everything that you've done and that we continue to do in partnership with DHR. That's a huge facility and they're always reaching out to try to make everyone as comfortable, as healthy. And as, as adding life to, to our years. So, so thank you, and it, it does work. And it would be great if we had another one, that would be so awesome. Thank you.
Again, you know, this is not, this is just to try to get the communication back with us, you know, since the pandemic. I know that you've signed off on our vaccine for COVID, doctor, so I appreciate that. I think we all appreciate the work that you've done. But I, I think in my, what I would like is to see just our partnership between us and the employees and our students. Just to, you know, see what we can do from going from here on. Like you said, meeting with Diana, meeting with Dustin, and whoever else you have to meet with in this committee as well, if you need to, to try to continue to work. Now, in, in the second clinic, you're not working with us, right? That's DHR finding their own facility. You're not, you're not looking to use ECISD. When you said about the second clinic, you're not work, you're not, DHR is not looking to work with ECISD or partner with ECISD.
We're, we're just expanding our primary care, so we're expanding access for, for the community. And we haven't ironed out the details of, of that clinic. But that would offer the ECISD clinic, you know, more.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, yeah. It would be more prioritized towards us. And then the other clinic can be for the, okay.
Right.
I understand what you're saying there.
We can work that out.
You're right, I agree, okay.
Communication is where we need to.
Right.
Just circle back.
Right, right, I get that, okay. Any other questions?
As long as, you know, we, our, our people, as we said, they're seen right away. If, if teachers come during their conference time, it's 45 minutes. So whatever school we're at, it takes 10, 15 minutes to get there, you know, another 10, 15 minutes to see the doctor. And we got to go because we have to go back, back to school. And, and sometimes for some of our staff members, that's the only time they can go. Because it makes it almost impossible after school, they have little children, they have other activities to do. So we'll put that health on, on hold and we don't want that, that we just want that our staff, because it is our clinic. That as much as we can to prioritize that for us. Thank you.
Last, Doc, Dustin, does this help us in any way in our insurance side of it? We, our employees use our, our, our DHR clinic? Does that help our, our, our fund balance or in our insurance?
As it relates to primary care, obviously, that is always recommended for the first point of contact.
Okay.
When it relates to health insurance and looking at fund balance and maintaining a healthy health plan. Once you start getting into specialties, special.
Right, but as a, as a.
Urgent cares, you start talking about higher costs. So we always try to communicate to the employees that having a primary care doctor or PCP such as a family practice like Dr. Gomez. Or any other primary care doctor, whichever they choose to see, that is the ultimate goal to, to maintain health. And you, you know, you having your yearly checkups, making sure that they're seeing the doctor when they feel sick or something. Because if they don't have that and they, that one time they see, okay, I'm running out of breath or, or whatever the case may be. And they have to go to an ER or an inpatient facility or a specialist, you're talking about a higher level of care. So primary care is always what we recommend for the first stop because most of the time, they can take care of it there. But obviously, there's obviously different situations where they have to elevate care. But, you know, we always, that's, that's, having a primary care is, is one of the most important things that, that any individual could have to maintain their health.
Thank you.
One more thing I wanted to add is because I'm a family physician and I have urgent care experience. And I have PAs who also have urgent care experience. The additional physician that we hired, it has her, owns her own urgent care actually at College Station. So we have provided countless urgent care visits to district employees at a primary care rate. So we've sutured countless, countless employees, provided those types of services, incision and drainage. Minor procedures we've done in the clinic. And that's, that's not offered by all primary care doctors in, in the valley. And that is something that we are pretty, really good at.
Right.
And, and I, it's saved the district thousands of dollars, you know, to say the least.
Well, thank you. Mr. Farias?
I've got a question. I'm glad you brought that up. Could you give me? I've got a question. I'm glad you brought that up. Could you give me those numbers? I don't need names. I just need numbers of how many of these procedures you've done concerning our employees at our district, number one. Number two, have you considered maybe twice a week staying a little bit later to facilitate our teachers that maybe can't go during school time, but maybe open till seven o'clock so they can go? I don't know if you've talked about it, but something like that, if you could consider, would really help us out with our teachers.
Yes, we're, we are open until seven.
And students.
And students. I apologize. And students, yes.
Like five to seven or five to eight.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Yes, we, we do, we are actually open until seven and we have morning clinic on Saturdays, eight to nine.
Oh, great. Okay, good.
Yes, so we already offer those, those services, extended hours, yes.
Very good. Thank you.
And I just want to thank you, Dr. Gomez, with DHR, when you helped out the district with the vaccines. It, it was very successful. It helped vaccinate a lot of people and I just want to say thanks.
Yes, and I just want to add, because of that, I think our number is at thirty-five, thirty-six thousand vaccines already. So we really appreciate that and working together, we made a major difference in initiating it. And it's, it's, it's a good working relationship. So I, I'd like to personally take the time and say thank you also. When, when we called you, you didn't hesitate and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Can I comment?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, doctor.
As superintendent, thank you very much for signing on our application to become providers.
That's right.
You didn't hesitate and as a result, we became one of the first providers in the state of Texas to, to vaccinate staff or vaccinate the community. As a result of your quickly signing off on our application, we probably were the first school district of any size in the state of Texas to vaccinate all employees that wanted to get vaccinated. And we were almost five thousand full-time employees. So thank you very much. Also, on the, on the services at the clinic, part of the agreement is, is to vaccinate our children regardless of their ability to pay. So we, we just want to reemphasize that. We would like for the clinic to vaccinate all children, whether they have insurance or money or not.
Thank you, Dr. Salinas, and, and thank you to the district because that, you know, I signed off and I gave the guidance and, but working with Diana and school nurses and school board members, such as all of you, that, that was the success. And, and that's, that's the point of this clinic. It goes beyond just one clinic site. And, and that's what I want to continue the relationship that we have and maximize it and see what more we can do. Because we've moved mountains and I think we can do more.
And again, thank you for coming. And that's kind of where I wanted to go, is to see where we can get, how we can maximize that clinic for the benefit of ECISD children and, and employees. So, you know, you can see how far we're going and I do appreciate all the work. Appreciate it again. Any other questions, comments? If not, we'll move on to item four, discussion of school-based telemedicine, telehealth for students and recommendation, if any.
We, we have a director of nursing, Diana Davila, she'll do a short presentation on this item.
Good evening, Board President and other Board members. This presentation is just very basic, just to explain what telehealth is. And many of us have already used it at some point, especially during COVID-19, but this is just a very quick little rundown on it. So basically what it is, telehealth is sometimes called telemedicine. And it's basically where you can have a doctor's visit without having to be in front of the doctor. It's having a live conversation with the doctor, talking over the phone or video chat. And you can send and receive messages, you can get prescriptions, and there's different varieties. I mean, there's a lot of different doctors out there that do different types of visits, but we're focusing on just something very basic at this point. So right now, our current data shows that our students that have registered on Skyward for twenty-one, twenty-two, of thirty-two thousand six hundred and thirty-two students that were on the system, we found that ten thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight and maybe more did not have any kind of active insurance at all listed. So we're looking at about thirty-three percent of those students being uninsured. Just a couple of things I just put up here. Under Texas Health 2022, one of the things that Governor Abbott said was, let's expand on telemedicine because he knows that every Texan can have more access throughout the state and they can benefit from this service. So what kinds of visits can telehealth do for schools? Well, we're looking at very minor illnesses, things like colds, coughs, stomach aches that are just, you know, something that's recurring or maybe something that's just a one-time thing, COVID, flu, strep. You can also receive therapy and online counseling through telehealth services. Certain skin conditions, rashes, or prescription management can also be done through telehealth. Couple of the benefits, of course, you would have limited physical contact so that everyone's exposure to certain infections and illnesses like flu, strep, COVID-19, you're going to limit that contact. And ensures that you can get healthcare anywhere. You can do it from the school nurse's office or you can do it from your car, from your classroom, anywhere you're at. This also cuts down on travel time and time off from school or work, especially for the working parent. It gives children an opportunity to see the doctor when they need it. And it reduces waiting time at a doctor's office for minor illnesses. And of course, this also decreases ER and urgent care, which is very costly. We also have drawbacks. The parent may not always be available. They may not answer the phone. They may not want to be there during the visit online. So this doesn't help the physician who may want to ask questions. A physician could also run into the problem with incorrect diagnosis due to not having that comprehensive exam. We could, you know, you also have no personal interaction, so the physician doesn't really get to talk to the child on a one-to-one basis. We could have problems with the internet, with the technology. And just like anything else with the internet, we have to be careful of security breaches and keep up compliance. So I was asked to poll the nurses. Do the nurses want telehealth or not? You know, what, what do they, what do they think? So this was one of the questions. Do they believe that telehealth can help their clinics? Forty percent, almost forty-one percent said that maybe it could. Thirty-eight said yes and about twenty percent said no. We asked the nurses, do the parents take their kids to see the doctor when you tell them it's important to see the doctor? And again, forty-two point nine, so it's almost a half there, said no. And then the other part, fifty-seven percent said, yeah, they go to the doctor. And we asked them, what do the parents tell you? What are the reasons they don't take their children? And the top one is time and the next one is lack of health insurance. And then, of course, money and transportation seem to kind of go together. The nurses were asked, are you for or against telehealth at your campus? And against it were thirty-seven percent, for were about twenty-three, twenty-four percent. And then we had thirty-nine percent who weren't sure. They're just not sure, you know, what services would be included. So they wanted to just get more information. And that sums up everything that I've got for you on telehealth.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Davila, are we currently offering telehealth services at ECISD?
Not through a provider directly in the school clinics. Telehealth is available through our insurance for employees. And if the parents have a telehealth provider that they want to use, they have called our school nurses and asked to facilitate in between.
And you're good? So what is, well, what is the, the major? Because I was like, you know where I was at. And then when you kind of had that talk, I was like, okay. That's what I wanted to do because I wanted, I didn't want to have any vendor. I wanted to hear, because I didn't know what this was. I mean, I'm, I'm, I was blind to this type of. So what is the, the underlying reason, the not sure for having this in our schools by your nurses? Is it the work level? Is not having the space? What, I mean, can you get a grasp of why they're not sure they would want to do it?
Sure. And, and I did ask them those questions as an opinion part of the poll. And many of them said that they felt like the clinics were too busy perhaps to have a tele-visit in their clinic. And they felt like, they, they were not sure if they could manage seeing little Johnny and Mary and Sue and then saying, hold on a second, I've got to take care of Cynthia over here. So they were like, I'm not sure if I can handle it. And, and that was basically where, where most of them were at.
And, and I know you've looked into, so advantage, 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 advantage to us would be what?
Advantage to the district? That's not what we're looking at. The advantage is to the child.
Right. Well, I mean, right. I mean, but I'm, yes, okay. I don't want to be advantage, okay. Advantage to the child. Advantage to the parent of that child. What is that advantage, advantage? I mean, if I'm going to make this decision, I want to know what is the advantage of doing this?
Well, we're mostly looking at the, the schools that are more rural because those are the ones that, that tended to have the nurses that said they were interested in wanting to pilot or having this program. And it's because primarily the parents were uninsured, they didn't have insurance for their children, they didn't have transportation. And oftentimes the nurse will call them and say, you know, your child is sick and you get him to the doctor. And instead of taking him to the doctor, they will just call around and ask for some medicines from a friend or other people. And so the, so the child never gets seen. So we're just trying to close the gap between those, those kids that can get to the doctor and those that can't. So that really the advantage is that.
And it's also like you had, you had mentioned, like, when you have the minor, at the high school with the, you know, at the high school, when you have those minor situations where you would need to prescribe very low doses of medicine that, to get them back to class, you had mentioned that to me.
Correct, yes. Telehealth medicine can provide over-the-counter medications that can be prescribed through the physician and ordered for the school nurse to provide to the student. In no time will the nurse ever give a medication without having that order from the doctor because it's not provided through our district to begin with. And it is for minor illnesses. It's, it's, you know, if the child has got a, you know, high fever and severe belly pain, this is not a, a telehealth visit. That's an emergency room visit.
Right.
And so the nurse needs to use her judgment as to when a child would need to see the doctor immediately, like in person. Or, you know, it's, you know, it's something minor. Little Johnny has scabies and it's between his fingers and mom hasn't taken him because she hasn't had time. And maybe we need that medication called in so they can get the child some relief.
And let me, and you're making those calls right now as it is, right?
We do.
I mean, that, you're, it's not like it's going to change the, the calls as it is. The only difference is there might be an opportunity to call somebody and put them on telemedicine, then putting the parent to take them to the doctor or, right?
That is correct.
Right. So that's, that's an advantage, I see, right now, right?
That's an advantage, yes, sir.
Because you do have that advantage because you do make those calls every day as nurses throughout our district. We're going to make them anyway. Right?
Correct.
Okay. So, and let me ask you this, because I know this is a concern. I know it was brought about our records and our record-keeping of, of, for the district and our children's record-keeping. Is, is, have, have you looked at any other district and how that, those records were secured that, so that they don't get out to anybody if we go in this direction?
Okay, so telehealth medicine, the doctor, the physician's office that this is run through, whether it would be, let's say, for example, DHRs, they have their own electronic health record, you know, that they have to secure. Our district has its own electronic health record as well. So we, we document the child coming in and what our plan of care is. And then from there, they jump over to the telehealth doctor. The telehealth doctor then chooses from, they, they're going to document what their findings are and what they're going to prescribe for that child. It is each, it is up to each entity to secure the records. I mean, that's the law.
Okay, so doc, okay, then, like, so how they would, this would work? So you're going to, I'm going to walk it like I'm going. So if I'm a parent, you're going to have it available, let's say we do this, right? And we decide as a board. This is just a discussion now.
Right.
But I needed to learn this and I wanted to make, you know. So is I'm, I'm a parent and I, and I would wish to use this service if ECISD provides it. I have to sign up for it first, right?
Correct. You have to sign and have a consent on file.
Okay. And if I don't do that, then I don't, you cannot use that, you can't call a doctor for.
Correct. Well, no, we, we will not unless the parent calls and says, look, I didn't sign the consent. Then they would have to deal directly with the doctor's office to, to obtain consent.
Okay.
Can I ask?
Yes, ma'am.
Diana, hi.
Hi.
You've, I, I know you gave a really good presentation. How long have you been looking into this telehealth?
We've been discussing telehealth since before COVID. Initially, we were looking at, at telehealth for counseling, to try to provide mental health services for some of our kids that, that weren't going in for ADHD meds, things like that, just counseling itself.
Okay. And on, let me ask you a question. How many nurses do we have in the elementary level and the secondary?
In the elementary schools, we have thirty-two, which is one registered nurse per campus. At the secondary, middle schools, we have one RN, one LVN. And at the high schools, we have two registered nurses.
Okay. And you made up a, I mean, you, you made a good point, excuse me, as far as the reasons. What reasons do parents give when they do not take their children to the doctor? And lack of insurance, that's the number one. I mean, and like you said, it's more in the rural, the north area, in the rural area. Transportation, that's another. And then right now, after everyone going through COVID, a lot of families lost their jobs.
They don't have money.
Whether it's their parents, one of them, both of them. So it's hard for everybody. And it's hard to leave work to go and, and do this. But if this is offered to the district for the parents, I'm sure a lot of them will go with it. If it's just for minor illnesses like you described here, headaches, tummy aches, et cetera. And really if this service is offered to the district, to offer to the parents for minor things, that's for the parent to choose at the end of the day, to decide yes or no. And let's say the district should go this route. Well, these consent forms can be done at the time of registration. So if I go and I enroll my child, this service is offered and I work in Mercedes or I work in La Jolla and my child, because I live here, goes to ECISD and she's got a minor illness. Well, it's convenient for me after talking to the nurse and explaining what my child has. At the day of registration, I signed that consent form. So it works well for those parents that don't work here or don't have transportation or don't, or have a lack of insurance. So I think it's a good, a service to offer to our, to, to everyone.
Mr. Salinas, coach, ma'am.
Yes.
And, and Ms. Davila, are the nurses fully aware of all forty-two campuses that they will be taking on additional work? Just a moment. We just gave them a raise and now we're going to turn around and give them additional work. As you stated, right now, that those were some of the concerns, that there are students in and out of the clinic all day long, number one. Number two, when a child does come in, does the nurse stop treating the children that were there and come, and is the telemedicine doctor going to sign on immediately when our nurse calls? As, as we have said, that, that was one of the issues, that our staff was going to our clinic and they had to wait extra. And, and, and if I may answer some of your questions, Ms. Garcia, as to why our parents sometimes don't take our students to the doctor, they have no money. So that, and you, you, you realize that because you and I- They have no money. So that, and you, you, you realize that because you and I have had a lot of conversations about that. And, and where we come from, all of us that, that have been poor. That, that when the nurse called, that we, we do call the neighbor. We, we don't, we, our parents, especially in the rural areas, there's three or four to a family. They're not going to take the child to the, and I'm just speaking because I was an area director for all forty two schools. Every time we call, they're not going to get up and go take the child to the doctor. That is the real realization. Of course, when the nurse calls or when the principal calls and says, you know, Ms. Bella, your child is extremely sick, you better come. Most parents come right away. But for minor things. And in my experience, and I think Dr. Salinas can, can voucher that, and those of you that have been principals, Dr. Garza. That, that, or that are here, that I see some coaches here know that. You, we send, we tell the parent and the child comes back the same the next day, you know? And we may tell our parent, you have to take them, but we, as you said, especially right now, they've lost their job and it's, it's hard. It's hard and we rely on our, our nurses. Now, Dr. Gomez, this is my question to you. If we're going to possibly expand and, and have a, a new clinic. Would this be a branch of our clinic with D H R and as, as Mr. Lamia said, you know, uh, get a pediatrician? To be there like on M W Fs or T Ts, which that's not, we're not going to say that's when the child's going to get sick. Would that be a possibility? And what is your opinion? What do you think of the telemedicine and how did you see it work?
Okay. Well, my big question is who's going to fund all of this? You know, telemedicine is a regular office visit for, for PCPs. So you are asking to do this for those students who have no insurance. How will this be funded?
Ms. Salinas, that was going to be my next question. These services that are being provided. Sorry, Dr. Gomez, for, for taking the mic away from you, but these services that will be provided if we do go this route and consider this telemedicine path. Where is it going to be funded? Is, is it going to be any cost, extra additional cost to the district?
Okay.
I don't know if you know that or Dustin, maybe you know that.
Or does it depend on the provider?
Well, the provider's going to bill regardless of what insurance you have. And to point to Dr. Gomez, my concern would be the kids that have our health insurance. Because my question would be, what is their billing amount that they're going to bill Blue Cross, whatever vendor that is?
Would that be, would that be something that we can look into if we decided to go to an R F P?
We definitely ask that question because the reimbursement rate and what we're paying is definitely my concern because a lot of our kids have our health insurance. Because a lot of our employees have their kids on our health. So that would be, that as it relates to telehealth is my only concern. Because my job is to manage the health plan. And when we start opening the floodgates, we want to make sure that first and foremost, telemedicine, that it's, it's working. Right? We want, if we're going to bring it out, we want it to be utilized, but it's working and it's effective. Right? Because at the end of the day, sometimes telemedicine. You know, we saw during COVID where there was a lot of doctors using telemedicine and, and, you know, some doctors, they'll use that because they know it's, it's fast. Whether it's five or 10 minutes, they can bill. And so we don't want to get it to a point where these doctors are seeing it five, 10 minutes and they're just billing and billing and billing. And then we start seeing the floodgates just get really open and somebody's taking advantage of our big large district. And so through the process, we can ask those questions and get those details to make sure that first and foremost, we pick a provider, whatever way the board wishes to go. What that looks like planned out and what the cost looks like, not so much if they have Medicaid or CHIPS, they're going to bill the government. But if it's our health insurance, that's what I'm concerned about because we have to manage that health plan.
And Mr. Salinas, I think, um, with the information that Mr. Garza and, and Ms. Davila and our concerns. I think it would be a good idea for us to maybe request an R F Q process with, with these strict, uh, uh, items. In, into the process so that way we know, we, uh, we get several companies. And we kind of see what their, what their, uh, their vision is going forward on the billing process and, and the amount of time allotted for, for each patient that they see.
So, Dr. Gomez, back to your question.
And just real quick, and, and just real quick before. And so what, this is, this is, this will have to go before the full board, you know, so I'll make them.
That would be my recommendation for it to go to the, um, full board to go for an R F Q.
Dr. Gomez?
But, um, yeah, I think, I think it's.
Yeah, and, and to explore, right?
Right. Just to give you some background on, on telemedicine, there are lots of rules when it comes to telehealth. Um, as far as billing, um, insurance, it, it, there's a lot of work the staff has to do behind the scenes. So although it seems ideal and yes, they can come in and we can do it quick in five minutes. There's a lot of background work, um, well, before and after that our school nurses would have to do. In order to get these visits completed. And, you know, my staff has to do a lot of work beforehand. My MAs have to attain a lot of information, starting from registration. There, depending on the insurance, there are some that do not accept telehealth if it's a new patient. You cannot do your first visit as a telehealth visit. That patient has to be an established patient. If it's a Medicaid patient, you have to switch PCPs. So there's a lot of insurance issues that would need to be worked out. Before implementing a big project like this. Doing telehealth in, in the school setting. And it would be a lot of work on, on the part of the school nurse to be by the side of, of the student. And then that would take away from their duties with, with the other students. It would, it would have to be really worked out.
Yes, Dr. Gomez, but did you mention earlier that, that you do provide telemedicine as well at your clinic? That you have provided it for our students in the past?
Yes, but that's with the students at their, at their home with their parents. This is not at school. That's very different. That's, that's different, you know, and then if you have the, the, the student being seen at school. They're prescribed something and then what, then later on, the parents are not going to know, you know, I know my child, I want, I want to know what. What they're receiving and what the physician or provider that they saw had to say.
Well, I think that's what, that's why the parents need to con, sign the consent in order for it to be, to be approved by the student and the parent. In order for them to receive these services. From the looks of it, it doesn't sound like, it doesn't seem like they're going to.
Let me finish.
It doesn't seem like they're going to be, uh, getting, getting, not, not getting the services, but it doesn't seem like they're going to be pushed into doing this. It's just an, an option for them to have. Trust me, I'm a full-time dad and I'm a single father. My daughter is going to be coming here to this school district. And I, I guarantee you, I worked three jobs just to try to provide for her on my part. There's going to be times where her mom is also an employee of the school district. There's going to be times where neither her mom nor myself will be able to take her. To a doctor if she needs to go to see a doctor at the time for something very minor. This is something that would benefit me as a single father. That's why, that's where I'm getting at. Because you know what? It's not the parents rotation. It's, it's not the money, it's not the insurance, but to me, it's because of, of my obligations.
Right. But as somebody who does telemedicine every day, there are a lot of intricacies that go along with it. And there will be a lot more work placed on the school nurses in order to do this. And they're going to be getting callbacks because the parents are going to want to know what happened with the visit. What did the doctor say? And then where is the telemedicine doctor going to be after, you know, at that point?
And that's the duty of the parent, as, as a, like I said, as a, as a single father, but I'm a very active parent. The parents have to be the ones in charge of, of the telemedicine and in charge of their child's care. So it's, to me, I feel that it's a great way to have it as an option. It's like, it's like when I tell my patients at home or at the hospital when they're about to go home. Do you think I need a walker or not? Like, you know what? It's better to have it and not need it than to need it and not have it. Because at, at one point in time in our lives, we don't know what's going to happen to our kids here at school. You have your kids at school as well, you know, it's, and you work full-time. Your husband does too. So it, we know that there's, there's going to be times where we can't take our kids to the doctor.
But I, as a parent, I will want to be there with my child and know what the clinician is recommending for my child.
And this is for something very minor.
Too busy for my children. So I will stop what I'm doing to go find out what my child.
Very minor, but understand not everybody's like you or me.
Right. So I, I just think this is a little bit, there's a lot more involved in telemedicine than, than you all understand. Coming from, you know, the clinical world where we do this every day, the insurance is, that's a huge issue. And then you're going to get parents complaining because it wasn't covered by the service. And then you're going to have to be dealing with the billing part of that, which we get, Wendy can attest to the complaints she gets about, you know, having to, to pay for bills. So, um, I, I think there needs to be a lot more detailed discussion about how to roll this out. If, if you are going to roll it out because there's, there's time that will be taken away from the school nurses. Attending to the, the students who perhaps fell in the playground and need. So she's doing a consultation, but, but, you know, Jose fell down in, in the gym. So what is she supposed to do? Stop her telemedicine visit or go attend to that student? So there are a lot of scenarios that you have to, um, be ready to, to. Be ready to troubleshoot.
And that's kind of where the nurses are at right now, right?
Uh, correct. Yes.
Also, will you be continuing vaccines, COVID vaccines? Because that's also been time that the school nurses, you know, if they're doing vaccines, if they're having to attend to our, you know, I, I want my school nurse to be available. If something happens to my, to my daughters. And I, I, I think there's a, a time and place for, for telemedicine, you know? But the, the other thing you have to consider is that a lot of these students have PCPs in the community. And yes, I know that not all parents will sign up for this. But, um, in the event that they do, that. The PCPs know the students, you know, they know their patients. And if, if somebody's complaining of abdominal pain and maybe, maybe they know the history of it. And then they can, um, give a better assessment of, of what's going on. So there's just a lot to consider. You know, again, telemedicine is, is great and it's made a huge impact in, in our world, especially during a pandemic. But I think, um, you have to proceed with caution if you're going to implement this in your school district. Because now, um, that, that's a whole other, um. Liability that you're going to take on.
Thank you.
Mr. Garza, have you, um. Called any other districts or anybody that has telehealth?
Well, we currently have on our health plan, telemedicine as we speak today. That was implemented and kind of forced upon all self-insured groups with COVID. The governor and the federal government mandated it. Um, so it's a current, currently covered on our plan. Is it being highly utilized at this time? No. As any other benefits are because like Dr. Gomez has stated. You know, you have those people that will, will take on telemedicine and some like it. But some people are old school where they want to see the doctor and making sure that the physical inspection is, is what is needed. But I think Ms. Davila has, has called counterparts of hers that have implemented something like this. And as we've talked about, there's not a lot of participation. It's offered, but not a lot of participation. I think one school district had about three hundred and fifty people that have opted in at a neighboring school district that's a little bit smaller than ours. So you don't see a lot of participation. But it's something that we currently have on our, on our Blue Cross Health Plan as we speak. And, and it's there for employees to utilize, um, for them or the dependents that are covered. But, you know, it, we're, the valley loves, you know, it's, it's.
In person?
Yeah, in the huge inner Dallas, in a bigger market, that's, that may work a little bit more, but down in the valley where, you know, it's, it's available. But a lot of people love to make sure that they're getting seen appropriately and whether it's blood work, whether it's a physical examination, blood pressure. You can't do all that telehealth.
Right.
You know, you could maybe say, oh, you may have a cold, but you may have an underlying condition that you don't even know. And now that there's that doctor, you take a certain medication or, or the kid may be allergic to it. You know, so all those things, you know, but it, but then again, for brutal kids that can't get to a doctor, it's a good thing. So you kind of have to try to balance it. But, you know, Ms. Davila knows her nurses better than anyone in this district and it, it will be cumbersome for the nurses to take this on. I mean, it's, there's a lot into it. It's, it's a great idea, but you know, one nurse at an elementary. You have kids that have certain time for medication. You have certain, you know, all that and they have to, or the emergency. You know, you just kind of, there's a lot going on.
Yeah.
So, but she knows her nurses better than any, I know she's checked with other school districts that utilize telehealth or something of this, of this type.
Yeah, and Diana, and so. P S J has this, right?
Yes, sir.
They're not too happy with, right? Is that the, the consensus there?
No, P S J, um, they're fine with it. They don't use it in, they have it available at all of their.
But they're not being, they don't, they're not utilizing this.
Not everyone utilizes, not every nurse. It's, it's the ones.
So are they letting the nurses decide who can use it and not at their school district?
Correct.
So not every, every campus has to have telemedicine. That's what, I guess that's what I was being, somebody told me something like that.
Not every campus utilizes it. Um, they know their parents better than anybody else, the, the nurses that work with them. So it depends on what the parents want. If the parent wants it, then the school nurse can then make a decision if, if this is a service that she needs to call in for.
Right. So let me ask you this. What would be, listening to what we're hearing and there's more, you know, more to it than we really think. What is the timeline that you need for us to go out and get this done? I mean, are we in a rush to get it done to, by the end of this month or can we have another like workshop? I think, am I, that's what I'm hearing. The whole board kind of needs to sit, right?
Beginning of the school next year.
This is just something we're just going over, right?
Right. But wouldn't we want to get everybody here and then go through all the liability, every little thing? Well, start up and then if we think, you know, I, I, I don't want to go either way. I'm, I'm not, I mean, you actually kind of had me going one way. And now I'm like, okay. But it, it's just good to know, um, that there's different avenues to work through this, so.
And I, I agree with Dr. Gomez. I mean, there is a lot of background work and a lot of things that have to be taken into consideration. And, uh, because we are such a large district and we have many schools. Definitely we would, we, I would recommend doing just a pilot in maybe two or three schools. Keep it very limited. See if it works, see if it doesn't work.
Okay.
We don't know what our parents, um, want at this point because we have not surveyed our parents.
Can we then do that, Dr. Salinas?
I would recommend, sir, can I comment?
Yes, sir.
Briefly, based on strictly experience. I know a couple of years back, uh, in my role as an assistant, I had a parent come talk to me about some concern on campus. She had a child with her. And I asked her, why is your child not in school? And she tells, and she wasn't there because of that. She told me that he has a rash. So I, I told the mom, can I see the rash? So she took off her shirt. Extremely severe case of rash. And I told her, ma'am, you need to go to the doctor. He says, no dinero, no, no insurance. So I picked up the phone, I called the school-based clinic and said, you, you need to see this person. There's a lot of parents like that.
Okay.
Several years back, another one. In Hargill, we had a child that got an ear infection, a severe ear infection, same thing, never went to the doctor, the child died.
So, so Doc, and I guess this is my question. This is really the word. Okay, so. We know that the, the majority of the kids that don't go see doctors is based on money. How do we fix that, Diana, through telemedicine? How does that get fixed through having telemedicine? Because that's the main one, transportation, all that, but. If, if I, Oscar Salinas cannot afford to take my child to the doctor. How does telemedicine fix that for me?
Okay. And again, I don't want to speak for any company, but there are grants that help, um, some of these organizations. So that they can offset the cost through the visits that they do see. And so then they, they see some of these, like, I guess it would be kind of like a pro bono, maybe, I don't, I'm not sure. I cannot speak for that company. This is why it would probably be relevant to get an R F Q and see what they do offer for that uninsured child. Currently, let me ask Dr. Gomez, if you have a child that goes to your clinic and they don't have any money to pay, what happens to them?
Well, first they have a visit with the, the parents have to have a visit with a financial counselor. So we have a D H R cares program and we do discounted services for, for all of our patients based on their financial status.
So it's discounted, but it's never free?
It is actually free for a lot of patients based on their financial status. But they have to have a visit with a financial counselor. So D H R does a lot of, um. Quote, pro bono care with our D H R cares program. We, we raise money all year for, for these, um, nonprofit organizations to offset the costs. So D H R has, and has already provided a lot of service to, to your unfunded students and, you know, uh, families. Through that program. So we already do that and we do it in person, um, a lot of the time, you know, well, this was pre-pandemic. But, but yes, we, we do that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Two things. One is the liability of being misdiagnosed. How would we take care of that? Number one. Number two, does our general liability insurance allow this? That's, it allows it?
And I do.
I, I do not, I don't
Oh, you shook your head, yes, I'm like, okay.
No, 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 I'm, I'm understanding what you're asking.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what our insurance covers.
Yeah, the general liability would fall under the property and casualty insurance. But this would be a, a big take.
Uh-huh.
And that cost, I don't have a cost for that at this time. But you're talking about a lot of liability.
And I can see it happening.
Correct.
You know?
And, and at the end of the day, too, you know, nurses have licenses.
Right.
And if something happens, is that nurse willing to put their license on the line?
Right.
And so that's, you know, they're professionals, they're medical professionals, just like anything else. But I think a lot of the details need to be ironed out to make sure if we do it, that's what the board wishes, that we make sure we go through the details, what that fully entails, and make sure that the nurses know, you know, what the processes are and see if it's something that's, it's, that we can do here. It's, it's, it's a good thing, but I think there's more details to iron out before we, as you can see, make a decision.
Yeah.
As to bringing, you know, making our nurses pretty much health clinics.
Yeah, and I think, Mr. Salinas, Oscar?
Yes, ma'am.
We should do a workshop.
Okay.
And just look at
So
This whole plan.
Right. So like, I'll make the motion that we move into a workshop for telemedicine. I need a second, Mr. Lemire?
Second.
Second? All those in favor? And then Ms. Vela, you'll set that up? Or do you want us to set it up?
Do we can.
Okay, I'll set it up. Well, thank you, Diana. A lot of good information. A lot of good information was given today.
Thank you.
Um, going on to item five, discussion and possible action for property and casualty insurance and recommendation.
This item will be presented by Mr. Garza, Dustin Garza.
It is up for renewal, expiration. It has to do with our property and casualty. I know last year, as you see in your packet, you saw last year's board agenda item that was approved. And we saw a about four to $500,000 increase from 2020 to 2021 versus this current plan year that was brought to the district and approved in August of last year. We are simply asking for direction. Do we, since we have a interlocal with PCAT, it's a co-op, do we seek a renewal to see what that looks like because of the market volatility that we see at this point? We, I have done some homework in, in asking, you know, people in the industry, other brokers of what they've seen with their March first renewals with school districts, especially in tier one, which is more coastal, and then tier two, which is us, more inland of the Gulf of Mexico. And they've seen anywhere between 15 to 60% increases across the board for property and casualty as it relates to this. The problem with, with the market currently is that there's a lot less insurance carriers that are willing to, to submit bids for Texas school districts because of the liability and the coverage that they're needed because of our assets. So this is basically direction, if the board or the committee wishes to take it to the full board, to seek a renewal, see what that looks like and bring it to the full board or, or direction as, as what you guys would want to see. My thing is that the earlier we start, the better. Because of negotiations, trying to get in front of other school districts that are getting renewals just like us, first, this is a September one renewal. But the earlier we start the process, the better. We do have some open claims currently, and I know you guys have been briefed on, the board members have been briefed on that, but we won't go into too much details about that. But there is open claims that are going to impact renewals. And if we were to shop it out to market, that would probably not be a good thing. But again, it's just basically, we wanted to bring it for direction so we can have direction as administration to see what this board would like to see, so we can move forward aggressively in whatever way the board wishes.
And I, Doc, and Dustin, I know we have a situation where we're legally right now in, what can I say, Doc?
Litigation.
Litigation with this company? Is that going to affect any of that renewal situation?
Yes, it will.
It will?
Because when, if we go out to market, the bid, the bidders are going to want to know details of everything that's obviously open claims, the details of what's been claimed, what has been fixed, what has not been fixed, those details. And, and if it's too large for some, they may just not bid. A lot of school districts that went out for March first renewals didn't get bids back. So the person that was, they should have took the renewal, did not take the renewal, shipped it out to market and then got a worse renewal. Because now the incumbent knows that's all they have. And so we have school districts that are a lot smaller than us, our 62% increase, and they have to take it because there's no, no other option. And so I don't want to put this district in that position, right? And so we just want to make sure we do our homework to make sure to see what that renewal looks like, bring it to the board if that's what the wishes are. And then we can have those discussions and if we like it, we can take it. If not, we can ship it out. But I wanted to bring it early enough to where we have time to talk about that, iron it out before it becomes too late and we're in July and August and we're, we have no time to do anything. So that's basically what this agenda is for.
So, Mauro, how's the, what's the earliest we, if we would have to go out? Okay, let me, before that, let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
Because we're done with the renewals.
Yes, sir.
You know how we've, we've exhausted the
Well, we, we could
The options, I'm sorry.
Not necessarily, sir.
Okay.
We can still renew with, under the cooperative.
Okay.
We've been a member of this cooperative for twenty plus years. So we can at least ask for the renewal for another year.
Okay.
Because, because we're in litigation.
Okay, so, and then I'm going to go back to the original. So because we've been that, we can go back, okay? So then, we have gone out for property and casualty in my, in my lifetime.
Yes, sir.
Because I'm, and we found that it did not, it was not productive.
No, sir.
I'm just, you know, and I, it was very unproductive
Yes, sir.
As it is. Do you see it changing on this time around?
I, I don't think so. Within discussions with Dustin and him contacting other types of insurers, he doesn't, he doesn't, there, there's not too many out there, sir.
Okay.
So we'll probably be in the same boat. The current insurer is, is under a cooperative. We could at least ask for a renewal. What's your renewal for, at least do that within time.
And then you need how much time to get going?
We probably need to go out probably in, in May, early May.
Early May.
Early May.
Any other question?
This, Ms. Salinas, going back to what you had mentioned earlier, this is the
Property and casualty.
But this is the company that we are currently in litigation with?
Yes, this is the one we're, we're in litigation.
You said that other businesses that provide this casualty insurance are slim to none or, or they don't bid for Texas school districts.
There's a lot in the last two years because of the Hurricane Hannah, because of the freeze, because of the other storms, a lot of insurers got out of the business of providing or even bidding on Texas school districts because of the size. Currently, you have a couple of insurers that will bid, some will bid just the casualty, which is the vehicles, some won't bid the property. So even if we were to go out, we would probably have to piece it all together. But then you start looking at, you may see an increase where you have to arrange or, or, or change deductibles. You may look at, on the casualty side, looking at raising the deductible for the, for the auto accidents and maybe taking of, of a, you know, part of a self-insured aspect on it because we can't afford certain deductibles. And so I think it would be an advantage for this district to at least seek a renewal, to see what that looks like, bring it to the full board and have a discussion. If we don't like it, then obviously have a decision maybe to go out. But just keep in mind that there's not too many players in this space, in Texas school districts. And, and like I said, I've, I've, I've called other districts that had March first renewals and they either, if they didn't like the renewal, they went out for a bid and didn't get anything back. And so, you know, we just got to be, you know, look at that very, you know, carefully and closely, but that, that would be my recommendation.
Ms. Salinas, just for that sake, I would, I would like for this item to actually be coming forward to the whole board.
Yeah.
So that we're all
But, but what they're asking right now, and we have to give direction, can they look for renewals and then if they could show us the renewal? And if we don't like it, then we can send it out? Or do they just wait for the whole board and then we make a renew? Because, you know what I'm saying?
Do we have enough time for the whole board to be here?
I mean, we, we could bring it to the board, but it's just going to delay us, you know, a couple more weeks, which, I mean, I don't see that as being a problem. I just, you know, with the market the way it is, anything could happen between now and then. Obviously it's not binded until September first, but we can at least have those conversations already, if possible, to kind of get ahead of other school districts that are trying to look for the same kind of renewals. But whatever the board wishes to do or this committee, we can do, we can make it work.
Only reason I bring it up is because I know Mr. Javier Sanchez did mention it when we were going through the litigation process. He did, you know, and he's not here, so.
Yeah.
It's just, it's just something to, to make sure that we're
And he's always been the one that
Yeah.
That this is his item.
Yeah.
But, but I don't, I don't, I don't see it binds us, Mr. Lemire? If they seek renewal, because at the end of the day, if all, if there's a majority of the board wants to go out, then we're going out, right? That doesn't bind us to any, but at least we know numbers.
Yeah.
So when you have it in front of you, you're saying, okay, this is what PCAT is giving us, and then we might all say, you know what, this is good enough. And, and the reason is I have experience with this. I'm, you know, when I was, where before COVID, I was, that, we, we went renewal, right?
Yes, sir.
And, and I know it was controversial with some board members, but at the time, it made sense for the district to go, just go get that, that renewal, right? So that's kind of the, the way. Do you have a problem with like at least letting them look and then bringing it to the full board? And then we could go any direction. I don't have a direction on this either, either way. And we can go out. I, I know where we're going because we've had, you know, we've had experience with this. And I know I love hobby, but it's going to be very hard to get, because if, you know, from history, we only have one other vendor that submitted on this, on this property casualty. We ended up paying more because we went out and then we turned around and, and really wasn't even a bid. It was just a letter saying, I want to be the record of agent or the agent of record for the product, and that's all we got. And so, you know, I, so I would like to at least let them look at sending us something. You all can have it in front of you and then you make a decision. I, I can go out again. We've done it before and I don't have a problem with going out, you know? Can I, well, make, I'll make the, can you?
You want me to make the motion?
Yes, sir.
I make the motion that we go out, seek, seek renewal? Is that, is that correct, the language? For our property casualty insurance?
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll go to the next item. Item six, discussion and possible action on RFP, employee benefit, self-funded, carrier, third-party administrator, preferred provider organization, PPO, pharmacy benefit manager, transparent, transparent modeling and co-op modeling and recommendations.
Mr. Garza?
Good evening, board members. We put this on the agenda because I know it seems like every year you guys are looking at insurances and you guys just went through a voluntary RFP last year that was very cumbersome and I, and I understand that. We're, this is on the health TPA and PBM side, pharmacy benefit manager. And, and currently, just to kind of give you a little history, I know this was, this is in their fifth and final year with Blue Cross Blue Shield and Prime Therapeutics. But though, we could always look at exercising a renewal if it's in favor of the district and if it's something that we want to look at, or the other option will obviously go to market for the health TPA and PBM. Just to give you some history, Blue Cross has been here since 2018. This district has just completed an audit prior to those years of 2018. And so currently, right now, the district does not pay administrative fees to Blue Cross or Prime. We actually get about $135,000 a month back because of the rebates on the pharmacy side, medical rebates and what's built into the plan and the design. I've invited some insurance committee members that are representatives from their campus and some of my staff for any questions that you, that you may have about Blue Cross Blue Shield and how it's laid out the last five years. I think the employees of Edinburgh School District appreciate this TPA. I think it's, it's been great for them. Fortunately for, for me, we don't hear a lot of issues with them, which is good. No noise is always good, good news. But again, this is just something we wanted to bring to you to start the process early if the board wishes to either for us to seek a renewal, to see what that looks like, or for us to go to market. The one thing I will say about health TPAs and PBMs, it's always good to start early. This is a one-one effective, but it's always good because of reimbursement dollars, medical rebate credits. The, the first people that are in line have more access to those rebates and more access to those upfront monies. So this is just to get direction again, whatever the committee wishes to do. Based off history, this is something that obviously I've looked into. You know, like I said, the employees appreciate Blue Cross and Prime. I think that they've done a great job administrating our plan. We've added some things like bariatric surgery. It's been going well. We haven't had issues with billing or issues such that with Blue Cross themselves. So they, the changes that we've requested from them, even the time, years back when I was here, we've made changes, we've adapted to changes and the billing aspect and, and the procedures have not faltered. But again, this is just to bring to your attention and then any direction the committee wishes to go, we will go.
And let me, real quick, can I just, so again, when do we have to go out by? May first?
I would say probably some April, May, sir.
April, May. This is a little bit
Make a decision and bring it to, to the full board for, for, because this is something that, that you guys evaluate as a committee.
Okay, let me, so we're again, we're done with them as well, right? We've exhausted all options with them?
Yes, sir, we renewed because of COVID.
Right, so do we have an out, another year to renew? Do we have that option?
As part of the contract, no. It's something we probably need to discuss with legal.
Okay.
If we could renew.
Right.
But it's something that we could go out for bids for, sir.
I'm sorry?
We could go out for bids for this, for this TPA.
Based on legal's decision?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If I may ask, Mr. Garza, that's good that you invited the insurance committee or several of the members. Can we hear from a couple of them just to get their feedback of how, how, you know, how they feel? Thank you.
Thank you, board members, for inviting me. Hi there.
Hi.
I appreciate it, for inviting us. I'm Berta Chavano. I've been on the insurance district committee for, since its inception, nineteen, I don't know, eighties, eighty-nine or ninety or whenever it was created. I've been here a while.
Don't say it, Coach, they'll know our age, please.
Okay, 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 I won't. The white hair won't give it away, I'm sure, but, anyway, I can tell you, from having served on the committee for so long, that we went from, I was, I was on the committee when we went to a self-insured program. And at first I was a little leery about it, but, and, and we, we struggled a little bit was a little leery about it, but, and, and we, we struggled a little bit until we finally got, you know, into, into the black, I should say. And it has worked out very well, but anytime we go back, uh, to the, uh, uh, staff members, the one, number one question is, are our premiums gonna go up? That's the number one question. Um, are our, um, are there gonna be changes? You know, what are they gonna change? And how much is it gonna be now?
Yeah.
And, you know, and, you know, can I afford it? You know, and that is, and I've always told people that one of the reasons why I'm on the insurance committee is not for the professional staff so much as for the cafeteria and custodial staff that really hits their pocketbooks.
Yes.
You know, and as a matter of fact, I had a custodian that, uh, a newer custodian that refused our insurance and went out and sought an insurance of his own, and he bought, was able to buy an insurance that served his family for $1 a month with no copay and, uh, at the doctor's office, and a, an urgent care visit was $25. I'm like, what? Wow. You know, give me the name of that insurance. However, for the district, Blue Cross Blue Shield is known, you know, worldwide, not just here in Texas. And so, with a lot of our students, staff members that have children that are off at college or moved away and they're still on their insurance, it behooves them to be with a company that is world, uh, world-known, you know? And, uh, we go on vacation, we want to know that you are covered.
Yes.
So, Blue Cross Blue Shield has been great for us, that I hear there are very, you know, and I'm usually the one to hear it, and I tell them, call me, email me, text me, whatever. And I do get questions from, uh, from different campuses, and, uh, um, this, the last couple of years, it has been pretty quiet. As Dustin says, it's, um, you know, if you don't hear it, it's, it's okay, uh, right now. So, I think that we've been doing well on this one, and, and I, I know that they appreciate being able to go to the doctors that they want to go to. Uh, in the past, pre-existing conditions was one of the scariest things for a lot of people. And we do have, because we are such a large district, you do have some that have a wide range of, of ailments for either themselves or their children and stuff like that. So they wanna, they wanna feel secure, and so, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield has been very good to us. So, um, I'm here to answer any questions, any other questions that you might have as far as the insurance is concerned. For us, it's been great.
Well, thank you, and it's good to hear from the employees themselves, to hear the feedback, and, and, and thank you, Mr. Garza, uh, and everyone in the insurance, you know, they're out there trying to present to the board for us to approve what, you know, what they think is good, uh, to, to get approved by us.
Mm-hmm.
But it's you all, the employees.
Yes, ma'am. And, and as far as the, uh, as far as medications are concerned, you know, one of the biggest concerns was, for the longest time, our, our, our premiums for, not premiums, but our medication was what cost us a lot.
Yeah.
But upon educating our staff members, you know, and getting the word out, hey, if you can go with a, a generic brand, or if you can go to these, you know, don't go to these pharmacies, they're not in our network.
Right.
Try to avoid, uh, going to certain urgent care, not urgent care, but emergency, uh, small, uh, places.
Yeah.
Then, you know, all of that has helped, and it's just a matter of educating them even more so, especially the new members that come in.
Yes.
They don't understand how insurance works, and.
Right.
It took me a long time, but I think I've, I've understood it a lot better, and so it's been great for us. And we do have some more board members. I know we've got Deborah here and.
Yes.
A few more that.
Please come forward.
Please.
I mean, it's good that we hear from you all.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Hello, everyone. Um, my name's Larissa Laws. I am a teacher at Vision Academy. I come to, pretty much reiterating what they're saying as well, my staff has not made any complaints or concerns to me regarding the insurance. Um, I also stand to you as a bariatric surgery patient. I was, uh, I got my surgery January seventeenth.
Yes.
Um, so, I am very thankful and, um, so appreciative that it was finally approved to have weight loss surgery be a part of our plan.
Great.
So, I'm speaking on that behalf, so I did use one of the, the five blues.
Good.
So, um, I'm very thankful for that. So I think Blue Cross Blue Shield has been a, a good thing for us as well. Um, Prime Therapeutics, uh, I want to be able to get back to you. I did have one, uh, staff member, uh, tell me some concerns regarding that because of some medicines that he wanted to continue, but once, I guess, that change happened, it wasn't an option for him. But he hasn't given me details, which is why I haven't reached out to you all, but, um, overall, um, they've been pleased.
Thank you.
Go to here. Thank you.
And before we go on, I would like to thank all the committee members, and I know what you all do is above and beyond, but I especially want to thank you, Coach Chavanna. I know that we are, as a board, informed of something that happened back in October at one of the basketball games or volleyball games, and you sprang into action, and you helped save the life of one of our staff members. Coach Chavanna, you have been and always will be the most beloved, one of the most beloved people at ECISD, always doing for everyone else. Thank you for saving that life.
Thank you.
Thank you, Coach.
I'd have to be a friend of mine.
I, well, I want you near me when it happens to me.
That never happens. Thank you for the training.
Yes.
For assisting and we get training.
That's good. That's good.
Uh, Mr. Salinas?
Yes, sir. Mr., Mr.
Uh, Mr. Garza, I know in the past, and I know speaking, speaking with you occasionally, uh, I have been interested since being on the board of entertaining the idea if ECISD would be willing to, uh, develop its own health insurance co-op, cooperation. Um, in your mindset, being, being our insurance manager, um, is that an option for us, and how, how long would it take for us to develop that?
That, that, that's a good question, Mr. Almio, and, and it, something like that is always an option, right? And, and we've seen other, you know, smaller entities that have, have gone into something like that. Um, the, it's kind of like telehealth, where the details need to be ironed out, because when you go into a co-op and you create your own network, you create, even though we're self-insured, we still have a big brother TPA that's overseeing it all, right? Making sure that, um, medical claims that come in are authorized, medic, uh, as a medical, uh, necessary necessity for that procedure, whether it's a medication or, or medical procedure, um, it can be looked at, that is a process. Because of our size, we have a lot of employees that utilize a lot of doctors. Um, back a couple of years ago, when we had a different TPA, we kind of had something like that, where it wasn't like a co-op, um, but we had a lot of doctors that were not in the network, that we were trying to get into the network because they were being utilized by our staff, right? And so, um, something like that would take a, a lot of talking to a lot of providers, if they're willing to opt in at certain, you know, reference-based or reimbursement rates, what that looks like. Um, you know, the, the beautiful thing about our, our, um, health plans is we have, we have what we call a PPO, which is, we give employees access to any doctor at any time. They don't need to go see a PCP like an HMO, then get a referral to a specialist, not, they can go anywhere. They can go straight to a specialist, overskip in a PCP, and making, and making an appointment, which is a big advantage. Um, can it be done? Anything's possible, but that would take a lot of cooperating. We, in turn, would be our own self-insurance company. Uh, we would be dealing with the balance billing, uh, which we know employees don't like when they get a bill from a balance, but say, hey, I already paid my copay, or I already paid my deductible, and here comes another bill, right? And so we would be dealing with a lot of that, um, in-house, because unfortunately, when, when decisions like that are made, um, my department is the one that's gonna be taking in all the calls, taking in all the employees that are having issues with billing, um, et cetera. And so it's something that we can look into, um, um, but that, that's a process, you know, talking to different hospital systems, talking to different doctors, looking at disruption and what that looks like, what providers are being utilized, um, and then trying to have an attack, you know, a plan that we can go to this provider, you know, are you willing to participate inside our network? But it's essentially, we're gonna be creating our own network of doctors, and there may be a time where we can't get all the doctors that are being utilized on our current plan. There may be specialists that don't want to, $700 for an ACL, let's call it, make it up numbers, you know, we want, hey, for this ACL tear, you're gonna pay $700 when they're getting $2,500 and they're booked for three months to get an appointment. So, those are the things that we would have to balance and see if it's, if it's something that we can entertain, um, but like I said, anything's possible, it's just a matter of getting those meetings started, if that's something that the district wants to look into, um, but essentially, we become our own health insurance. Like, fully.
Dustin, um, if I might add, also, just as I mentioned before, something like that would be, I mean, it would be wonderful if we could do that, however, again, going back to children that are away in college, you know, out of state, um, how does that, how would that affect them if they have an emergency and have to go?
And that, that would be one of the concerns that we would have to look into, because when you do co-ops, most of the doctors that are utilized are local.
Local.
And so, I can tell you that an MD Anderson, they're not gonna opt in, and we have a lot of cancer patients.
Mm-hmm.
And so, those are the kind of facilities that we need to have in our health plan that could say, I'm not gonna, I have people all over the world coming to see us, I don't need to take your, you know, to opt in to pay, you know, pay me what you, what you think you're gonna pay me when I have people reserving appointments for six months? You know, so, it's, it's doable, but a, an entity of our size, I mean, you gotta dot all your i's and cross all your t's, because there will be a lot of disruption. And, and we always fear making plan design changes or formulary changes because of the disruption. Uh, we don't want to take away anything from the employees, um, and, and, and having a co-op, there's a chance that may happen.
Thank you.
And, and, so like, reference, what, what, I mean, I've heard it for a while now, reference, what's it called?
Reference-based pricing.
So, I know that the previous consultant always said that eventually we would have to head that way, right? I never believed, I've never agreed with him on this, but is that something we need to look at?
Well, reference-based pricing is kind of what I touched on earlier, Mr. Salinas, is if, if that's something that we want to go in, you're still gonna have to have your own contracts as a school district.
Yeah.
With providers. And, and, okay, these are all the services we want listed under reference-based pricing, are you willing to participate? A lot of doctors may say no, and we lose them.
Yeah.
A lot of specialty doctors are gonna say no, because we all know.
Yeah.
To go see an orthopedic surgeon.
Right.
Or a gastrologist or something like that, you're waiting two or three months to get an appointment. And so, it's something we can look into, but you're gonna lose doctors, you're gonna lose some services that we may not currently have, because we have a very rich health plan.
Yeah.
You know, we.
Yeah. I, I mean, I agree. I mean, I just wanted to make sure it's on, no, because that's something that.
Basically, an agreement with the provider, um, list of services, this is what we're willing to pay, do you want to participate? Yes or no?
And who does that negotiating?
We would have, we, it's our district, we would be doing that.
So it would be you?
Correct. We would become our own health insurance company. And then the other side of that is the balance billing. So say I have a doctor that agrees to these prices, yes, you can put it in contract, you're not gonna balance bill, but they do. And then, you know, the employee pays the bill, a month later, here comes a bill, and they're bringing it to our office to fight the bill.
Yeah, of course.
And, and we don't have the staff to manpower massive amount of billing, balance billing from providers. Um, currently, we don't have that, because we have a TPA, we have an established network, um, with Blue Cross. Um, they have hundreds, thousands of providers, um, that we don't, they don't get balance bill, because they have a, a negotiated contract with the providers, and they pay fee for services based off CPT codes that are submitted for billing.
So then, what would be the advantage for us to go reference or co-opping in ECISD? Is there any advantage for us at this?
The advantage would be lower cost.
Lower cost.
Right? But it comes with a lot of disruption, and so we would have to balance that, are we willing to, you know, let's say we, our, let's say our, our staff utilizes 1,500 providers, are we willing to cut it down to 800, 500?
No.
Tunnel all the employees to one, and like I said, you may have where MD Anderson or those big time.
Right.
Hospitals won't participate.
Yeah.
And so, that was a concern, um, and, you know, that'd still be a concern. Is it possible? Yes, but there's gonna be disruption.
Yeah, we don't, well, that's just me. Any other questions? So, what are you looking to do here?
Administration.
What a direction do you need from us?
Recommend to see if we can seek a renewal, um, given with Mr. O'Handlon. Um, I believe they came in in 2018, they had a five-year agreement, three years with two annual one-years, so this would be their fifth and final year. Um, and then see if a renewal was possible, to seek a renewal, to bring that back to the full board, and then, like I said, because remember, it's a one-one renewal, but we need this established before open enrollment, which usually starts in September and October, because the employees need to know what they're getting into.
And so when you seek renewal, it's not binding to.
No.
Or the board can, can still go out like they're prepping casualty.
Correct. Bring it back to the board, the board does not like it, we can ship it out to market.
Okay.
But it just gives us that extra added test. So move?
Well, we gotta make a motion.
Oh.
Yeah, we need to make a motion.
Okay.
Um, you want me to?
Yes, sir.
I motion that, um, that we go out for possible renewal, uh, from our insurance manager, Dustin Garza, that he can go out with, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield for a renewal, and then, uh, bring it back to the board for, uh, for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries for, for seeking renewal. Uh, we'll go to item seven, discussion and possible RFP for workman's compensation access insurance recommendation.
Mr. Garza?
This is, um, our workers' comp and excess insurance. Obviously, this covers anything that an employee that has run on the job. Um, we are currently with TriStar Risk Management, they are our TPA, third-party administrator on workers' comp, and Frost Bank is with our excess, excess insurance as relates to workers' comp. This is our fifth and final year, and administration is recommending that we seek, um, RFPs for this, um, coverage.
You don't want to, you're gonna seek, we're gonna go out?
Yeah, because it's a fifth and final year, and because it's, it's, it's something that, you know, we usually ship out when it's done.
Okay.
Um, TriStar's been here for many, many years, so.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Oh, um, I motion upon the recommendation of Mr. Dustin Garza, that we, uh, finish the fifth year of our workers' compensation insurance and go out for RFPs, um, after this year is completed.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion? No discussion, all those in favor? Raise your right hand, all those opposed, same sign, motion carries. We'll go to item eight, discussion and possible action, RFP 15124, uh, 403 and B, and 457, third-party administration, TPA, recommendations of any?
This insurance, um, has to do with our annuities for our employees. They are the third-party administrator that manages ensuring that all the IRS regulations and guidelines are in place as it relates to loans, withdrawals, or anything they do within the retirement annuities. Um, this product was renewed for one year with our current TPA, which is Baybridge Administrators,